Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of North Fond du Lac. I'll call the meeting to order. The roll call vote, please.
Chizim.
Yes.
Gopalski, yes, Haak.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
We're all in attendance, so therefore we have the call. A report on public notices, please, Mr. Seid.
Thank you, President Chizim. Public notices were mailed to KFIC 107 by Pondem Bowl, WFDL Radio, and The Reporter, as well as Polsthat Municipal Building in the Village of North Fond du Lac, the District Office of the School District of North Fond du Lac, as well as US Bank located in beautiful downtown North Fond du Lac on May 11th, 2018.
All right. Thank you very much. Please rise. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're in? In the members' packet that was sent out recently, there were the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they were published? It seemed none shall stand approved as presented. Treasures report from our newly minted treasurer.
Yes. All right. Our cash balance on hand as of March 20th, 2018 is $20,5,897.49. We have receipts from April 20, 2018 to April 23rd, 2018 in the amount of $828,263.97. Transfer from investment accounts, $3,619,047.25. No transfer from OPEB, so our total receipts are $4,653,208.71. Our expenditures from March 20th, 2018 to April 23rd, 2018 were $4,456,397.45. No transfers to investment or OPEB account, so our total expenditures...
Hold on a minute, I'll... If you wouldn't mind, you've got the wrong one.
Okay.
Give me one second.
You've got to see all those big numbers.
Yes, you've got the wrong one. I'll get you guys this, okay? I ran, I took the wrong bubble one, so I'll get you.
All righty. No worries.
Give me one second.
All right. Well...
I was just practicing singing.
While we wait for the updated financial report, I'm going to jump ahead to I am Jeanine Clark's report.
There is nothing to report.
Well, that's quick.
Sorry, I could talk slower. Just say nothing.
No correspondence and no donations. All right. Moving on, item number H, Student Council Report. We have a new student council representative, so why don't you introduce yourself to those of us that haven't met you and the people here?
Hi, I'm Dominic Ackerman. Student Council held elections for their officers and representatives for the 2018-2019 school year. Following students will serve as student council officers for next year. Dominic Ackerman is president. As co-vice presidents, Paige Smith and Gavin McDowell. Jenny Katania is our secretary. Andy Rabada is our treasurer and co-historians in Kate McKing and Edie Malarkey. The students went on May 8th to talk to the eighth graders about becoming representatives on student council for next year.
Yes.
Yes, I did.
We'll do that.
Elections will take place on Friday. Student Council is Saturday she kisses for our last event this year. This is for kisses senior goodbye, and students of faculty can write a message to be delivered with the kisses. The kisses will be given out by graduation at campus. Brother Club's NHS held its induction ceremony on April 29th. There were 22 new members this year who were inducted, and we had an excellent banquet that was provided by Eden Meads. Our newly elected officers for the next school year are Presidents Dominic Ackerman, Vice President Mathias Gilverson, Secretary Eliza Audrey, and Treasurer Moira Sheen.
So you're president of both student council and National Society?
Yes.
All right. How much are you selling those kisses for?
$0.50 for one and $3 for another.
All right.
Welcome aboard.
Well, so you will be participating in the board meetings for next year?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, we'll try to keep it enlightening. Any questions for our new student council representative?
Do you have any questions for us?
Don't be bashful.
They do, they want the input.
He told me he's actually filling in for Amber tonight because she's good softball, so it's kind of a dry run for next year.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome. Thank you very much.
And then I apologize, this is the updated correct one, so any other questions if you guys have with the bills, what I can do is I can get you all that micro stuff. It's going to be quite a bit less because it's only been two weeks. It's our June Invictus, so I apologize for that. Grab the one and the whole.
So, the amended treasures report, please.
We have two more manhandled numbers as well. So, our cash balance on hand as of April 23rd is $196,811.26. Our receipts from April 24th, 2018 through May 14th, 2018 were $240,205.99. We transferred $500,000 from investment accounts, and we had no transfer from OPEB, so our total receipts are $937,017.25. Our expenditures from April 24th, 2018 through May 14th, 2018 were $751,933.38, with no transfers to investment account or OPEB, so our total expenditures were $751,933.38, leaving our cash balance on hand as of May 14th, 2018 at $185,083.87. So, asking bills recommended for payment as shown on our list, the amount of $347,520.40.
All right. Thank you very much. So, the...
Yeah, what I will do is I'll read...
The report, the distributions from last month?
Right. What I will do is I will get you updated if you're okay with this right now as a provisional, and then if there's anything that you'd like to make amendments on for the June meeting, we'll do that. So I will get you the amended and the corrected information out, and then you just let me know. I apologize for that.
Okay. So then pending any questions from the board member, I'll take a preliminary approval for approval for the checks for this board meeting cycle at $347,520.40.
I'll second.
All right. For the questions? Roll call vote, please.
Haak.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Chizim.
Yes.
Gopalski.
Yes.
All right. In add, motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is item I, Superintendent's Report.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Chizim, and welcome, Dominic. It's going to be a pleasure to have you on the board, serving as a voice of the students, so thank you very much. We have a lot of things to celebrate, so what I'd like to do is we have some students, and there's a couple different things with the students. First is going to be the musical. We're going to celebrate, we have a ton of very successful musicians, and we're very glad to have Anthony Rasmussen, who can tell us a little bit of the state of music and the School District of North Fond du Lac. Let's get it over to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Seidoff. The state of the music, May board meeting address, I'd like to kind of notify as the state of the music address. The state is strong. We had really great numbers as far as both that district and the state solo ensemble. We had 28 high school vocal district events participate, and we had 12 high school instrumental district events participate at Old Field or Horicon this past year, and then of those 11 state events went and made it to Oshkosh the last weekend in April. And of that, many, many good remarks and great comments. We received many firsts. In fact, the first time now that they changed the rules where instead of an exemplary soloist is now exemplary performance. Any performance that is deemed worth an exemplary performance with qualifications, it can be a duet, it can be an ensemble, and we were lucky enough that the show choir placed an exemplary performance at first, and many of the show choir members will hear it. As well as nominated for an exemplary solo performance, Mr. Benjamin Franklin, which we will hear in a little bit.
Yeah.
But, yes. But before I get into that, we're going to have Ben and Abe come up, and they're going to perform a piece for you in German.
Woo!
And I'll let them introduce the piece and whatnot, but seniors Benjamin Franklin and Abraham Eagle, they're going to be performing for you, and then, as I mentioned earlier, Benjamin Franklin will be performing his musical theater solo as well. So, gentlemen, if you come on down, feel like this is The Price is Right, come on down. There we go.
If you... The camera is right there. You can turn it.
This is one of my... This is one of my favorite voices.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we will be singing "De Breslem Kite" by Haydn.
Yeah. An interesting aspect of the piece is that very frequently throughout the song, we voice cross, so that means while he usually sings the low part and I sing the high part, there's moments where we end up switching, he sings the high part and I sing the low part, so keep your ears open for that. (singing) Freunde, was der Markitsch, was der Markitsch, was der Markitsch, stumm, stumm, stumm. Löhne dieses Ahnenfische, löhne dieses Ahnenfische, dieses Ahnen. Dachmann weile kehrt sich zu, geht sich zu, dieses Lauter, unser Tisch an, dieses Lauter, unser Tisch an. Dachmann weile kehrt sich zu, dieses Lauter, unser Tisch an, dieses Lauter. Dieses Lauter, unser Tisch an. Was für Rennen sind wir nicht, wenn dir ein Wein aus dem Spree. Was für Rennen sind wir nicht, wenn dir ein Wein aus dem Spree. Was für Rennen sind wir nicht, wenn dir ein Wein aus dem Spree. Was für Rennen sind wir nicht, wenn dir ein Wein aus dem Spree. Wir mahnen Streiten, leben. Wir hören, keine hören. Keine, 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 keine. Wir mahnen, wir mahnen Streiten, keine hören. Was für Rennen sind wir nicht, wenn dir ein Wein, wenn dir ein Wein aus dem Spree. Wir mahnen Streiten, wir mahnen Streiten, keine hören. Was für Rennen sind wir nicht, wenn dir ein Wein, wenn dir ein Wein aus dem Spree. Freunde, 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 was der Markitsch, stumm, stumm. Stumm.
And how about a quick translation? What did that first line, what does it mean? Is it talking about...
Comrades, water makes us dumb.
Yeah. But what doesn't make you dumb in the text? What are you talking about?
We're getting drunk.
Why?
On education, man.
How long did it take you to learn the German?
Until the week of the performance.
And now, can I give us the intro of your musical theater piece?
I know, is it happening?
Sure. Set the scene.
Okay, I'll set the scene. Well, I'm singing Beethoven Day from your good man Charlie Brown, this part of the show. Schroeder, that's his name. Schroeder's trying to convince everyone that, hey, Beethoven's birthday is like the national holiday, we should all celebrate. Beethoven's birthday. (singing) Call the principal and hand him the news. We got a holiday that he can't refuse. A day of harmony, a day of music, Beethoven's birthday. Beethoven Day, a reverential edition. Beethoven Day, the hope of each musician. No more am I the only guy to stand up and say, "Hooray, Beethoven, hooray." Beethoven. If you're wondering now, how do we start? Just blow the music till you know it by heart. We're gonna celebrate, we'll throw a party. Beethoven's birthday. Beethoven Day, and when you state the title, Beethoven Day, you hear a great recital, the ride of air boy and girl to stand up and say, "Hooray, Beethoven, hooray." Beethoven Day. Beethoven Day. Beethoven Day. Beethoven Day. Beethoven Day, a philharmonic rombo. Beethoven Day, a polyphonic jambalaya. Dedication as we stand up and say, "Hooray, Beethoven, hooray." Let's imagine it, that glorious hour, filled with emotion and fired with power. And we all honor the man we adore. On the day we place a new mystery face on our Mount Rushmore. Beethoven Day, a moment of reflection. Beethoven Day, a classical injection. So facing this direction, we begin today. A musical collection everybody can play. The ride of air boy and girl to stand up and say, "Hooray, Beethoven, hooray." Hooray.
And that is just a sample, two samples of what Jerry and I get to work with each and every day, and that builds the foundation. Total kudos and thanks to Mike Reese and to Head of Fauska with laying that groundwork. And I want to definitely give a shout out to my instrumental colleague Jerry Scadella with the jazz band that performed at State as well. The flute choir performed at District, so they had a good showing, performed well. Just, solo ensembles the case of any given judge, any given day, and one person's opinion might not equate to how another person might feel, so in that regard. But very proud of all the students involved. A lot of you came up, came tonight, and we want to recognize all of the students that were involved, both in District and State. And also, two students were, one student was selected as a recipient of the Honors Choir, WSMA Honors Choir. Jenny Katania was selected as one of 150 spots for a female singer to be in the Honors Choir. There's 1,600 applicants typically throughout the year, and a student was selected as an alternate, she's here tonight. Cameron Seminis was also selected as an alternate, and so we're fingers crossed that she might get called up, but definitely want to recognize both those two students and all the students tonight that are here. Yes.
Could we have each one of them that are here stand up and kind of say like what they did?
Absolutely. Stand up if you were involved in either District or State solo ensemble.
And state your name and what you did.
I was in solo ensemble show choir as a soprano, which is fun. I'm used to either being usually an alto, so it was a new experience to kind of try and sing higher than anyone else. My name is Cameron Seminis. I have been in show choir since I was a freshman, and that's something I really enjoy. And I went for a solo ensemble for that. All three years we've gone and have done really well. And then I did a solo in solo ensembles, sang German, which got a second. What else? Oh, I did flute choir too, as well.
And your musical theater piece?
Oh, yes, I did my musical theater piece, but that day I made it to State.
You still did a very nice job.
I'm Tricia, I'm soprano, and I was in state solo ensemble show choir this year, but I've been to flute choir in previous years, which I'm pretty proud of. This is my second time going to State, and I'm proud that I got to do such an opportunity.
Okay. Hi, Ben Franklin. So I did the two up there, the duet with my buddy Abe, and then I did my musical. And then I did my classical piece, which was a German piece, which did get to State. And then I was also part of the show choir. So much fun. I love show choir. I've been on the show choir so much. And then I went to State with a quartet with me and some buddies, Abe, Mack and Victor, and yeah, that was pretty fun. Yeah. And then me and Ally also had, me and Ally Sotomayor also had a duet, which was at State, which was at 9:04.
One of the first events.
So our voice was pretty hoarse. So, you know, it's fun, memories you make, not just... Yeah, this was my first ever year doing solo ensemble. I did two events, duet with Ben and the quartet with Ben and two other guys. I've been singing a bass for both of them, and I'm a bass in normal choir too.
To borrow mantra of someone that I know really well, things don't happen just 'cause. So thank you to those of you that, and also the parents of those students as well, because that says a lot about you as well. So kudos to you, and kudos to, you know, admin team and the school board for your continued support in music in the School District of North Fond du Lac. It was not go unnoticed. We thank you, you know, the wealth of knowledge, especially when it comes to the theater. Some of you have that, and we welcome that and cherish that and hope that never goes away. So, thank you so much for the board and your support. So, it's one of our favorite traditions, no pun intended, with Fiddler on the Roof with tradition of past year, but I would like to bring up one of my co-directors that I have. Come on up. It's our fifth annual now fall musical. We started with Beauty and the Beast back in 2014. We followed that with Wizard of Oz and Cinderella. Last year we did Fiddler on the Roof. And without further ado, we would like to announce this coming fall, 2018 musical, the fifth annual musical here at the School District of North Fond du Lac. About a little jump ball.
I see we did the reg, all that kind of stuff. Might as well get the church, we're gonna be good.
November 2nd. The first weekend in November, I think it's the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the first weekend in November, 7:00 PM, 7:00 PM, 2:00 PM. I did check the Packers' schedule, I believe they play Monday night, so no excuse there. Okay, Packers go play Sunday, matinee, so we'll be all right. You guys can come along. So those three showings, and Ms. Klonderman, Ms. Gilliland, Mr. Scadella bring back in the pit, and it'll be great. So, it will be.
Peter Pan.
Peter Pan.
I've always said to Anthony, I said, "I've got one, two rules. Number one, please get something we've heard of. Number two, don't do anything too weird. As long as it fits into that, it's awesome. That's gonna be great. There's a lot of great talent. Who wouldn't hear his underclassmen? That's pretty jacked up." And Peter Pan.
Yeah, there you go.
Awesome. Well, I want to thank Krista, also Anthony, Jerry, Mike Reese is retiring. I mean, our arts are alive and well, and as Anthony said, it's because of hard work and people dedicated, so thank you guys very much for all that you do. What you do is definitely not, does not go unseen, it's very much appreciated, and you make us better, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Peter Pan. There's gonna be alligators, or are you gonna get real live ones after that? The Springs had like a fine thing, I said we get two of them. That'd be all done by the fill. Yeah, that'd be cool. All right, so we have two more things, and if it's okay with the teachers, we'll have the, if the students go really quick, they're gonna do an update of School Store, kind of like the state of the School Store, and Mr. Wismer and Oriol Outfitters. So I'm gonna introduce Kurt Wismer. He's the leader of probably five or six of our different businesses in school, and yeah, a couple. And just to give you guys the School Store a little bit of excitement, today I'm pretty confident that the school board is going to okay the construction of the School Store this summer. So when you move in next year, you're gonna have your new glass wall, beautiful Orioles' nest right when you walk in. So with no further ado, I'll get up the presentation and bring your crew up.
I'm not gonna say anything, it's all their show.
You guys hear about the lift off that Will's working on?
Yep.
What song did we pick?
We didn't.
We're still working on that.
Did you like the ideas though?
Today we did a run-through though. Basically, we have a route out of the lift off, so it's coming along.
All right, so today we presented with the annual reports, the highlights of 2017-2018 school year. The managers are Andy Rabada, Autumn Waller, myself, Brenda Benitez, Rochelle Cottell, and Tricia Groves. About the operation, the operation is run by the five managers under the supervision of Mr. Wismer. The marketing, accounting, management, operating, and sales promotion is all done by the students throughout the class as well as after school. All the profits go back to support the school through clubs such as FBLA and Oriol Enterprises, as well as the students enrolled in business courses.
As a merchandise manager, my job is to decide upon the quantity, price, and vendor of the merchandise, reordering merchandise, organizing special events or sales for the holidays, delivering specialty merchandise to the customer, handling online sales, contacting and evaluating different vendors, and making requisitions for each individual order.
As a financial manager, we manage, I manage financial records and auditing, proof checking accounts payable, managing special orders and discounts, managing inventory values, preparing financial reports, controlling cash, handling store kiosks at special events, handling financial short and long-term planning, and handling cash.
As the operations manager of the Oriol Outfitters store, I help the upkeep and maintenance of the store's equipment and fixtures, maintain inventory records for the school's performance and future planning of merchandise sales, determine the display and space of each item, devoting specific space to new items or promotions that we may have, organize interior displays and rearrange often so that it's eye-opening to the customers, manage the Oriol Outfitters' email and appeal to the customers' needs, operate the store kiosk for all special events and operations, manager, or manage and monitor the Oriol Outfitters' website and e-commerce solutions, and maintain a strong security system and decide what to do if a theft situation were to occur.
You're like the cop.
As the sales promotional manager, I am in charge of finding ways to present, display, and promote the products and special events provided by the School Store. I display products and the display keys for all students and faculty who need, and I provide original online promotions to display on social media and even Oriol TV, school announcements, and other school pages. Along with this, I must manage all social media accounts.
Hey, I'm Autumn Waller, as many of you know. I am the group's sales manager, so basically what I do is I design any merchandise that is wanted by club or sport, so track, FBLA, anything. Anything basically gets run to me and to me. Orders are placed, first of all, by the school coaches and club advisors, so I come to them asking, "Hey, do you have any ideas? Would you like any merchandise?" Or things like that for your team or club, and basically we make it happen. So I manage the design and sales process with the coaches, so I talk it over with them. And also, I also contact like representatives of the class. So during homecoming, we have homecoming shirts with either like a little logo or a saying basically representing their class, and I come up with a manageable price and design and everything like that. And then I also manage and develop relationships with the coaches and advisors to offer specialty merchandise. So this, for instance, this was specialty merchandise, things like that. And majority of our Oriol Outfitters' sales are actually through special orders. So everything that you see, let's see, these are just through our store, but basically the majority of our sales is specialty orders and things like that going through the different organizations that we have through the school. I also help organize event orders such as like the pink-out shirts, and I also communicate with all of these guys, basically for ideas and everything like that. Here are just some things that we, that I have helped design along with these guys. Sometimes when you get your undies in a bundle, you gotta, you need a little help or a little brain fart. Well, a little group gathering is a lot better together than alone. So here are some of the things. There's cross-country there, ice fishing, fiddler on the roof, wrestling. There's cross-country there, ice fishing, um, fiddler on the roof, wrestling, um, student council, um, Charlotte's Web. And as you can see, the tie-dyed shirt down there on the bottom is our juniors' clutch shirt that was designed this year. And then the next slide that you're gonna see is just a couple more things that, um, we have recently designed, as the Coral Cabaret shirt that has recently been designed. And we have, um, weightlifting or powerlifting, I'm sorry. Um, our pink-out shirts are the top-left, think pink, um, game day for girls soccer and things like that, and boys' basketball, of course, as well.
So, some improvements that we've had for this year is hand-delivering the items to prevent customers from taking home their own order, which also prevents that theft situation that we've been trying to avoid. So far, it hasn't happened. Uh, promoting our merchandise across multiple social media, uh, platforms for better engagement with the customers. And we are working on building a brand-new website so that it's used more efficiently. Uh, each manager had their own designated job but had assistance by the other managers when needed. And then each manager got to work with the others one-on-one with the jo, when the jobs did happen to overlap. For an example, when the merchandise got to work with the sales promotion manager for special events.
Uh, some of the promotion mediums that we use this year were our website, flyers, Facebook, Instagram, emails, and our display case. So, for Facebook, Instagram, and our website, this is how our pages were laid out. On Facebook, we had around 230 followers. On Instagram, about 40, and our website was available to everyone. Here are some examples of the online ads I created this year. So, the first one was used around three weeks before school started. Uh, the second one is a basic item promotion of the dry, faded zip-up for men and women. And then lastly, the winter camel hoodie. Uh, so a special thing we did this year was our Black Friday promotion. So, online orders over $60 receive a free cinch bag and beanie. And we had like around 30 people take advantage of that. And we also have our display case in the high school comments.
So, this is how our website update is going with. So, the one on the left is our current Oriole Outfitters' website. And down below is kind of like how people can select what they want to buy, like scroll through and look at all of our merchandise. And on the right is what we're kind of, the template for the updated version of it, which we're hoping to have run by the end of the summer. And, um, I am creating the template right now, but we're throwing in all of our managers to help out and create the final product so that it'll be available when the store comes out next year.
Okay, so our, some of our financial results for, um, our all-new in-store merchandise purchase for the year was total to $1,767. Our total gross in-store sales were $4,072. Our credit card fees as charged through Square Up were $18.83. Our bulk special order and team order sales were $4,716. Our sales from online orders totaled to $3,874. And our profits from online orders totaled to $726. Um, sales from club orders online totaled to $11,924. Our profits from club orders online were $1,286. And a 500 scholarship was paid to Brian Mustafi, who was our last year's financial manager. And our total sales were $24,586. And our profit from all sales amounted to $2,568. And just a quick note, um, our profits, we still have some additional coming in. Are there any questions?
What's your percentage of sales due to your, uh, social media outreach?
I'd say, uh, yeah, I think what mostly got the Black Friday thing out was through social media, because we did have it like on Orange TV and stuff. But, uh, I made, like, I posted them a few times so that many were able to see. And, uh, like I said, we reached about 30 people at that, so that's been good.
So, you guys are clearing about 2,600 bucks.
What do you thought about running a promotion with your social media accounts to get people to share?
We did have, uh, what's it called, um, the trivia thing?
We had a Christmas trivia where like on Facebook, people could comment on your first answer, a win, like a beanie or something like that.
About getting something where if they share, like, their name goes in drawing if they share the page, so that you get more shares and get more people.
Do you have exclusive rights to anything that's got an Oriole logo on it or that? Or do you have to compete with the community screen printers and stuff, just, so it's up to you to do a better job so people stay in-house?
Uh, last school year, what were your total sales? So, this year it was, uh, about 25,000. Last year, do you know what it was?
Like 6,700 something.
Total sales?
Total sales, that's not the profit, that's like the total sales. Was like 6,739.
So, this is a huge jump this year?
Yes.
400 times.
That works.
That's pretty sweet. What do you do with the profits?
It goes back to the scholarships. Definitely, it's like scholarships, uh, FBLA can take certain trips with that, Oriole Enterprises can take trips in like, the medium.
So, then that money kind of supplements Oriole Nation, maybe doesn't have to support those different groups as much because they generate revenue?
We will typically give as much away as possible. This year, we gave away $500 scholarship. I'm hoping to quadruple that in the near future. That was one of the goals of building the new school store. If, um, if we can increase our sales, I can, I can increase the amount of money that we give away.
Can you sell frozen pizzas out of the school?
We can work on that. We are adding the, like, the, what are they called?
Oh, cribbage boards.
Cribbage boards. Uh, that's, uh, like the dead dad classes are making. So. And I believe cutting boards as well.
Yeah.
Yes. Cutting boards as well. So, Christmas time rolls around, um, students can get their parents, you know, especially moms as well during Christmas or mother, oh, Mother's Day, there you go. Mother's Day right around the corner, you know, they can go ahead and buy them their moms or whatever, whatever their situation is, they can go ahead and, they can go ahead and then buy or something like that.
I think we were also talking about having like a specific athletic section within the store, so that it would be available to not only the general school population but also the athletes as well. So, we're hoping to make a lot of them participate next year.
And with the new school store, should have a lot more traffic.
Yeah, especially now that it's in a more open area and more visible when people come in for games.
So, who manufacture, who does the, uh, the garment? Obviously, you're purchasing the garments from a, from a garment manufacturer. Who's doing the soap screening and the embroidering?
We go through Print Tech. Um, uh, we go through a guy named Pat and...
So, Pat is a, uh, we use Pat from Print Tech. Uh, he's a, he's in Black Creek. And then we also use Two Blondes. Um, that's the name of their business. It's not just two random blondes. They, uh, they do the sequined, uh...
Rhinestones.
The rhinestones and such like that that we picked up this year.
So, you're, you're specifying, uh, you're picking the supplier of the garments and picking the style of the garment that you want, and then coming up with a design and then, and then folks in Black Creek.
Yep, and we've worked with local suppliers. We've worked with, uh, we priced out a supplier from New London this, this year, right? Uh, and we found out that we're still getting the best value at the best and the best quality of, through our existing clients. So, we did do some comparison shopping to make sure that we were getting good value.
Do you do anything embroidered?
Yes.
Do you have that done local or...?
No. Everything's done through either Print Tech or through our other supplier, the Two Blondes.
So, what is the ideal profit margin that you'd like to make? I mean, you're, so you're taking in 20, almost $26,000 and making 2,500.
Uh, more than that.
Has Chris had anything in mind, you know, like, like to register?
The prices are based on product, uh, category. So, for club orders, so with Coral Cabaret, we keep those prices as low as possible. We, we take a very small markup on those, uh, because we know that we're doing a service to those clubs and we want to be able to retain their business in the future. And our, uh, and we're trying to make their job easier by having the online sales and not have to worry about collecting cash and such. The in-stocks, in-store sales and the sales online of general merchandise, we have a slightly higher profit margin on, uh, knowing that that's just going to the general public versus supporting clubs and students that are paying for those directly.
I have one more question. The non-apparel items, like the cribbage boards, cutting boards, that sort of thing. Um, is that, since they're made in the school here by...
Yep, they're made, yep, they're made at actually our wood shop. So, that is another, I believe that is another, is that another business?
Oriole Enterprises.
Oriole Enterprises.
So, there's, you, you're able, because it's a custom homemade thing, you, are you able to get the better profit margin on those items?
We'll know next year.
Awesome. Good idea.
Hey, one last thing is why, you know, I just didn't even know this existed. And I'm saying, you should be pounding these parents because we look for junk in the stores. And you look what these girls are wearing, that is, I would rather buy my daughter something like that versus, and give it to Oriole Nation versus, I mean, get my emails or whatever, but I, I never knew this existed.
That's the benefit of having the new store next year. It's gonna be right in the middle of the Commons and the high school and you, you won't miss it.
Yeah, so you've got some nice product.
A lot more promotion.
Right now, it's kind of buried in the music hallway, which is in the middle of the school, so we don't get a lot of traffic going through there.
Also use Ms. Hoff. You can send anything through Mr. Wismer to Ms. Hoff. She, then the Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, we have an app, so any of that can happen. There's a link for Oriole Outfitters right on our front webpage. Later on in this meeting, we're gonna talk about approval of the new school store in the Commons, but I've been in, uh, for instance, if you go to Ponte High, you go to the Commons, their school store is front, is right in the front. And so, I've been in a number of other schools where they had their school store predominantly displayed. And it shows the community a sense of, of school spirit as well, so I'm, I think it's a great idea.
I did, when I, is this my fourth year?
Fourth or fifth?
Something like that. I was, I, I made myself the personal goal that, uh, we were gonna hit 25,000 in sales. So, uh, with the rest of our profits coming in there, we'll hit it this year. So, um, now, now let's shoot for 50, right?
That's pretty low, but we'll get there.
Baby steps.
Now is the time, we're going to have some priority standard conversation by Mr. Rose and his awesome teachers. This is your opportunity, if you would like to...
There's one, one, one thing I forgot to mention about the, back to the music thing. We do have wonderful music parents a part of the music, uh, music board. And they are actually, a couple of them are stepping down, um, and we're gonna miss them dearly, we thank them for their service. But, uh, to future, uh, parents coming up and, and to those that would love to help, uh, help out in any means necessary, doesn't even have to be a, a board position, just, uh, we meet every, typically every, uh, second Monday, but it might change due to Oriole Nation meetings and whatnot. But typically every second, uh, Monday, each, third Monday of each month. And, um, and, yeah, so for this one, but yes.
You didn't remind them of the practice of staying on two years after your child graduates?
Oh, that...
I know, I graduated last year.
So, any all news about spreading the word for music parents would be great.
And one other thing too, is as, as a part of a music parent, there's no fundraising. Oriole Nation takes care of fundraising, so as part of music parents, what you do is you help get food, organize, uh, plan outings, organize the scholarships. So, it's, it's about doing things and not having to worry about raising money.
Yeah, it's just helping, it's helping, it's helping the directors, um, sell tickets, uh, work the doors, uh, help the students for music, um, help with the band uniforms. Um, it's very easy.
So, wanted to get that in there before.
Alright, so this is the time, students, if you'd like to go, thank you so much for coming, and parents also. Peter Pan. Awesome.
We literally practiced this. Like, it was so hot because they mixed on the dishes after lunch. Do you remember that? You would like sweat bullet because the dishwasher, it just runs, it's so hot. It turned out in the, I heard in the music room, I was off today, my freshman year. And then I saw for a year, we used it before, I think my freshman year, it used to be a metaphor. I saw for a year, I think we were in the, turns out, turns out.
Peter Pan.
We had... I feel like we never ate here, so. It was like vending or something.
I guess they roll, dance out their face.
In the left-right plane, they could do anything, up and down, so.
What's your one perk? Alright, and if it's okay with the board, um, myself and my team here, we're not gonna, we're gonna go in English and we're not gonna use any music or anything, if that's okay.
I mean, there's still...
If you're requesting German, we can try. It's gonna be pretty bland and we probably can't answer your questions, but, um, so I just hand you a, a half sheet of paper here that, that will reference as we go through this, the tool that we've been using, so, uh, just hold on to that for a second and, um, you know, I just saw this was a great time. We've been doing some really significant work with our curriculum the last, uh, year and a half or so, and I just wanted to give the board a brief update and allow you guys to ask some questions. So, I'll give a, a general, um, overview and then pass it over to some of our educators that have been in the trenches doing some of this work, and they'll just kind of speak to that, that teacher end and, and how that work's been taking place. So, um, so basically, um, when we talk about our curriculum, um, there's, uh, you know, our district's going through this work, and other districts have gone through this work to, in essence, simplify the curriculum and set some priority standards or priority learning. There's certain scholars that have done research on how many standards school districts are expecting students to learn, and sometimes that number comes out to be about 23 years worth of standards. Well, in our district, we have 13 years that we have students, so when you do the math on 23 years worth of standards versus 13 years, something has to give, you're not gonna cover everything. Hence why some, uh, districts in us include have chosen to take a look at standards, look at prioritizing which standards are of most importance and, um, that hangout you have is kind of our criteria for how we go about deciding what has more importance. And again, it's all based on, on research of various educational scholars. So, um, last year, we began this work by, I, I sat down and met with every team, K-12, every content area, and just asked them the four questions at the bottom of this list, which really just kind of guides any, uh, any school system probably in the country here, if not the world. So, I asked teams, "Hey, what do you expect students to learn?" Not what do we, what do we like kids to learn or what do we think kids can learn, should learn, but what do we expect students to learn? So, I asked, made sure every voice was heard and get every team, every grade level. How do you know that our students are learning that? And what do we do when they don't learn that? And then what do we do with, if they already know that? So, those are the questions that, um, guide us when we met and talked last year. And then as we look at, um, this document here and look at that, uh, the plan that we created, um, with, uh, input from our admin team and our district leadership team, um, we're kind of going through those questions systematically in order. So, phase one, which is this year, we really focus on the question, what do we expect students to learn? So, right now, we're really heavy with our math and ELA teams, and we're looking at the standards and asking that question, "Hey, which parts of this curriculum..." question, hey, which parts of this curriculum do we really expect students to learn, and we're going to get the most bang for our buck, because at the end of the year, we might not be able to teach students to mastery every single skill, but again, through prioritizing and going through about it systematically, we can get our students learning at a really deep depth as opposed to breadth, and just knowing a couple things, or many things, okay, but a few things at a very deep level. So this is my, I'm hoping to kind of give you guys an update on this process, every year or so, as we go through the different phases, and, you know, I kind of won't go into too much, the outlook there, but I will highlight down below where it says 2021 and beyond, basically, this significant work will be ongoing. There's districts that have done this nine years ago, and every year, they change their priority standards, every year, they look at their assessments and make sure that they are, again, knowing what they expect students to learn, and they have a way to identify if students are learning that or not. So, kind of in a nutshell, just from the work that has taken place this year, and we'll update as we go on to phase two and phase three. And, you know, just, just looking at my notes here, you know, as I've kind of been talking to people from around the, around the state too, someone had said, oh man, when do we want to have this done, to have all of this work completed by? And my answer to that is 10 years ago. So if we would have had this done 10 years ago, or 15 or 20 years ago, that would have been the perfect time to have this done, and kind of want to look at, when's the best time to start this work? Right now. So if we didn't start this, this year, or start talking about last year, the best time to start would have been right now. So this is the right work to do, again, many districts have started this process, gone through the same process as us, and are eight, 10 years into it, we're again, at phase one piece right now, and it was the ongoing work that is just part of what we do in North Bonneville. So what I'd like to do, before we open up for questions, I had just a couple different teachers from our K-12 staff, and I just want them to speak to the meetings that they've been to during that phase one, and we probably, with these people here, we've probably met three to five times this year. You'll probably hear some consistencies, we have, you know, math teacher, high school math teacher, middle school, con skills, kindergarten teacher, you're going to probably hear them say, yeah, we do that too, or that's how this meeting typically runs, or that's exactly the criteria we use, because when you talk about student learning, it really doesn't have anything to do with what you teach, or what grade, or what content areas, the process of being clear on, hey, what do we expect students to learn is really what we're looking for. So with that.
I can start it up.
And yeah, and you can stand, or, do you want them to stand? And I'll just introduce them really quick here to a case, so this is Adam Mickey, one of our middle school con skills teachers, we have Amy Sambel, high school math, and then Dale Hock, kindergarten teacher. And I did have one of the board members, Dale kind of asked if you're available.
I'll start it off. So I represent the ELA middle school, so like Adam said, I'm Adam Mickey, I meet with Julie Skare, who does eighth grade in ELA, and then Lee Score, who's at the sixth grade level. And then we meet with Adam over here, a typical meeting would be Adam busting up a big white sheet of paper, and he's got the different standards listed on there, and we're putting little marks by, thanks, there's just a lot of visual stuff going on, and our goal is, when we get through the standards, and talking about them and prioritizing them, our hopes are that certain things are just going to kind of jump over at us, and we'll be able to go from there. When asked, you know, like, how do you pick a priority standard? I think we always think of just future steps, so to take in college and career ready, to hear that term, but in the future, what are the ones that are really going to rise to the top, that are going to help them go from there and succeed? The impacts that I can see from meeting here, first of all, I just look at, it's really hard, like, as an educator, there's so many, especially ELA, we're working on reading literature, reading for information, speaking, listening, writing, grammar, so there's five areas, and it is hard to try to, you know, master every single one, so to be able to prioritize and say which ones really rise to the top, just makes sense. We're able to collaborate with others, we meet every day or close every day with our teams, but we don't really get to necessarily meet the other ELA teachers, and so, like Mr. Score, we were kind of joking about it, because, you know, he's on the other side of the hallway, but we could go weeks without seeing each other. So it's cool for us to just have conversations about that stuff, and kind of feed off of each other. I've also noticed the scope and, the scope and sequence, we could, each grade level, six through eight, could have the same standard, but then we can look at it through our grade level and see how it basically builds off one another, which was, I think, something that was really cool in our conversations. And then you can start to see that we're developing a common language, and so hopefully that when the kids start through six and end with eighth, or be able, every year, to be able to hear some of these same terms where they recognize it, and it just, it makes more sense when we get to the next level. It makes us, I think, more organized, smarter, and more common, those were the three words I picked, to overall just kind of sum up, you know, why would we do this, which in the long run, if we're that, that's going to lead to our kids and being able to master their skills, so.
Alright, I'll go next. At the high school level, the math standards look a little different than they might at the middle school or elementary level, because it's not broken down by grades, it's actually broken down by things like geometry, algebra, statistics, and functions. So our job with the math department, which is Dan Heidley, Ryan Lyle, and myself, is to try to figure out where those standards fit into each one of the classes, and our meetings look similar, we're with, also with Adam, we've got that big piece of white paper out there, we have each class that we want to talk about, algebra, geometry, algebra two, those are the three that we're focusing on, and we try to figure out, and we started out focusing on algebra, and then we would talk about each, like, a list of the ones that we thought belonged, and we'd talk about why they belong, they're using these four criteria that I think you have that sheet, and we do also focus on what they'll need after us. So it's, I'm primarily an algebra teacher, so that's the foundation. So for me, it's easy to say most of the standards that I teach, yes, they're going to need them in a class coming up, or, you know, in algebra two or geometry, but it's interesting to see, I agree with you, we use common language, and we don't even realize it, and that's a good thing for all of us to realize, that we just need to keep communicating to each other, and then using those same words when we communicate to the kids, so that they can see that connection each year. And we have found some things, another thing as a department that we thought was very interesting, is there are standards, standards which also fit in algebra and algebra two, but now we have some better clarity on the level of mastery that we have to have at each, each level, and we weren't really thinking about that before, about the level of mastery. So now we're, okay, if we introduce systems of equations in algebra one, this is the level of mastery we expect in algebra one, in algebra two, we expect this change, not that we're teaching systems of equations in both places at the same level, but that we up the game a little bit when they get to algebra two. So it's, it's been a great conversation, and we are all close to each other also, but don't always get a chance to have these conversations, so it's good.
Okay, well, in kindergarten, we do the same thing, we look forward to Adam coming with his rolled up butcher paper, and what madeups he has for the meeting, because he always has different madeups and things like that, but on the chart, it has kindergarten first and second, so the common thread is, like we've all said, the common language, and it's fun to see what first grade's doing, because we don't really ever basically see them too much, and then second grade, what they're doing, so we can see the scope and sequence of where we're going, and we'll pick a, we looked over the charts, and we looked over the standards, and picked the high priority one that we thought, you know, it kind of correlates to our report cards, too, our standards. So you don't want so much on there, but it's all important, but you want to put what's going to carry them over all the way to Adam, and you too, but we're waiting right now. And so that's really important, that common language all the way through in that thread. So we started at kindergarten, and I think eventually, like, 4K knows what we're doing too, so, you know, they're not really meeting with you, but they know what we're doing, and so Debbie shared a lot of what 4K does with us, and like, 4K will ask us, what do you want us to, what do they know for kindergarten? And so we want to know what first grade wants, so it's kind of nice to see that chart on the board like that, but not so heavy with every single standard in it. And so we have literature, informational text, foundational skills, writing and speaking and listening. And so it was fun, the last meeting was really fun, because Adam gave us two little samples from different districts, so we finished, we got our priority standards listed, and then he brought us samples from different districts, and of course, he wouldn't tell us where they're from, and it's like, what do you think of this one? And I had all this stuff on it, and then one that was very similar to what we kind of picked, more slimline, and the one with all the stuff on has been doing it for quite a few years, and I thought, well, we're back to standard, all the way back to the bench of doing it all over, whereas we slimline things. And not that you're going to not do every single standard, because you're expected for the children to know that, to carry on, but you just want to know what's the big umbrella, and then work underneath of those spokes. So that's what we kind of do, we talk about it, there's sometimes we don't agree, or sometimes the communication is, I don't really know what this standard means, what are they talking about? And so we have discussions, and so the kindergarten team is really all on the same page, and I think every grade would be on the same page, because I can see that happening in every level of, what does a standard really mean? It sounds really great on paper, but what do they want? And so that paperwork, it kind of brings it all down to, so you know what they're asking for, and then you all have that common thread again, and the common language, so it can go through.
And again, by design, we could have just taken what other districts have done, said we're going to do that, and I could have just done it alone, or said, hey, give me one person from each grade level, let's just do that, but purposely we wanted to create a team approach, those conversations are taking place, and we wanted to create this, these standards, because we know our kids better than any other district, and, but it's good to, again, just kind of compare, it doesn't want to change anything, but, you know, a lot of things rise to the top that other districts I feel have priority too, so. And just to piggyback up on one thing that was said, again, all standards are important, and, you know, I'll remind our staff of that, so we picked that word priority for a reason as well, it doesn't mean those are the only standards we teach, but those are our priority standards that we're going to really track closely and really make sure that we know if kids are learning those skills. So it's, you know, I didn't want people to think, other standards don't matter, we don't teach those, or we don't get to those, no, we want to get, teach kids everything, but we have those priority pieces, when there's times that we can't get to everything, that's, that's our goal.
Well, Adam, just to interject too, is it gives you ownership of the standards too, you're just not saying, oh yeah, that's a good district, they have high scores, so we'll do what, exactly what they do, but you really don't know what they're doing, because it just looks good on paper. So everyone got to talk about it and things like that too. You know, maybe it won't be five years, maybe we could dwindle that down a little bit to get to the nitty gritty, but anxious, because now we've gotten to where we are, but.
You can certainly choose the right priority, you know, and focus really heavily on it, it can streamline, and, you know, once they get that, other things just kind of trickle into place, so that's.
And that's that first two, I mean, that leverage and endurance, that hey, if we kids really master this, there are other things that we don't have to go into as deep because they've got it.
Because it trickles down.
Those really, again, it's been great discussions, I've learned a lot just meeting with teams throughout the district, and probably about 50 to 60 adults are engaged in this work right now in our district.
How, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, it's reassuring as a high school teacher to know that there are certain things that I can expect, that will be taught at the middle school level, and they'll be taught to mastery. And so that is reassuring, because, I mean, there is a crunch for time every year, and, you know, like Adam said, there's 27 years of to teach and only 13 years to do it, so if they get to the high school, and it's nice to know, there are some things that I can expect that these students will be able to do when they get to me.
I think something else that Adam's helped bring together, common, you know, Lucy Hawkins, you've heard, you've heard other things about programs and stuff, but that common language, when kindergarten and third grade and fifth grade, if all these grades are using some of that same vocabulary to refer to the same things all the way up, what a huge impact that has made when Dale, you know, pointed out that common language. Just having that, and we're, you know, even though we're all unique here, everybody's not going off on tangents of, I'm going to try this, or I'm going to do this, or I'm going to do this, you know, at least we have some common things that everybody's got to do, and I think that's really going to move us.
Yeah, when we first put Adam in this position, that was, I know the one thing that was said, we had to get everybody talking the same language, and I just think that propels us in general just forward, just by doing that, so I'm so excited about all of that.
How were standards communicated prior to this staff for this process? Great question. I'm not sure, I know we've had some new staff, they've been said to me last year, do we teach standards in this district, which are scary things to have people in education say, so, again, you know, talking to every teacher last year, every content area, we were on different pages as far as what we want kids to learn, so moving forward, what we're doing, I have, I just scrapped about 20 emails today to all of our content areas to say, hey, are these, I'm assuming these are the standards you're using, can you please verify, and we know if they're not, because they'll be on our website, and then going to next year, I'd like to have you guys just approve those, we typically just approve them through our student handbooks, but I want those to be on the website, identified, and then we have our priority standards set too, we'll have those as well, but that should be clear to anyone that goes, comes to our district or is on our website, know, hey, these are the standards.
I was actually the staff member that asked him that, speaking of common language, he wasn't the only person I asked if, if we had certain standards I was supposed to teach, and everybody responded with the same common language, they said, that's an interesting question. So I think there was a lot of confusion on, you know, what standards we were following, and so it's, it's nice to be able to have these now, in case we do have some sort of turnover, you know, that we can, the new staff, we can let them know what our expectations of them.
And we've been working on this for.
I was just going to say, you missed all those in-service.
We really, really tried, and what it came down to is tell us what you want, and we didn't have the capacity, the leadership capacity to do it well, and that's what Adam's role is, is to have that capacity so that we can focus and have that information, so I think that's, you know, I think we have a lot of people working really hard, but not as smart as we can be, and I think that's one of the great things, that we look at these standards, and we look at common assessments, then all of a sudden, we can become true professional learning community. So I applaud the work, and we're just at the beginning part of it.
Sounds awesome, sounds excellent, and then when you speak to the common language, that, that sounds like a great concept too, to me, as a layperson, do we leave room though in there for the individual talents and individuality of our staff members, so that they maybe teach to that standard, but teach it in a way that they can do best, or, you know?
Yeah, I think that student learning piece, that's that tight fit, like, this is what we want students to learn, but there is some loose fit with, how do we get students to learn that? Now, if we know a certain way works, it's great to replicate that, if it's a certain way that is maybe more like, you know, someone's teaching craft or teaching style base, that might be a little bit different, but, you know, we talked last year and this year just about, you know, we don't want to take that art form of teaching away from staff, so again, with, with some of this work, we also want to, again, I think, teaching is an art form, and there are some nuances that are going to be different, which is okay, but things that need to be consistent and the same for the sake of our students. So it's kind of a balancing act, if that makes sense.
Well, and also for those students, in a perfect world, they'd start in kindergarten or 4K, and they'd stay till 12th grade, but, so you have a lot of ins and outs and things like that, and you want them to feel comfortable too, so you got to get them, you know, at the grade they come in, and then have that common language throughout too, so.
I even think at the middle school, if you told me, Lee, and Julie that we all had to do the same thing, you're going to see three different totally ways probably of presenting it, you know, so I, I can see where you're going with that, but at the same time, I think that's, that's one of the coolest things, our job is how we can get creative with it, Nick.
The piece we don't want to sacrifice is, hey, if a teacher has Mr. Mickey for English, and then has Amy for English, that all, if they have Adam, they're better off because of, you know, who he is, no, whatever teacher we have in that grade level, that content area, they're going to get the same education, so we want to guarantee that for all our students. Getting within that balance of, we want our staff to. Getting within that balance of, we want our staff to be who they are and use their, their talents to teach.
If you want to, Adam, really quick, just, as Adam, I was doing his review today, and we were talking, and he showed me this, and it's really kind of hit home, kind of explain this a little bit, and see if they can figure it out.
Sure, sure. So we have three districts here, we showed this to our district improvement team, I think it was last week, but we have three districts, A, B, and C, that we're looking at state achievement for ELA. So on our state assessment, how many, what percentage of students were advanced and proficient?
What's average?
So, what's that?
What's average?
State average is forty-three percent. Forty-three percent. So which district is North Bonneville?
Not that hard, guys. You're not hurting anybody?
You can be kind.
A lot of growth up the country.
Okay. Any other guesses? Actually, I want to say C, but C is actually my first.
I would say C.
Oh, that's.
Okay. North Bonneville is District A right now currently, based on last year's state assessment. We don't have all the current numbers in for this year for ELA. So then Districts B and C, I know we're on camera here, but which, what districts do you think those are? Who would those be?
Some places has eleven.
E. Oh. Forty-three percent's that state average, so yeah, C is right at that state average. B is well above.
Okay, don't make him say anything.
Okay. Districts B and C are also North Bonneville. How do we get to District, to be District B and C? Well, C is, you know, I'm a big believer in simplifying education, it's very challenging, and sometimes we can be our own worst enemies. District C is what would happen if every adult in our district just had one student next year that they got to be proficient and advanced. Maintain where all the other students are, but then, hey, throw in your load, just one extra student. So if we did that for ELA, we'd be at the state average. Just one. Just one student. So, yeah, as you look at your class list, gosh, I want to help ten, fifteen kids, yep, we want that, too. That's what would happen if we, you know, not that we're focusing on just one student, but if we did that for one student. District B is us, it's same thing, but we help two students, each adult in our district, that's administrators and teachers. So, again, obviously, it's our job as administrators to inspire and make sure that our staff and ourselves know that we have great power, and, you know, to me, I just, you know, believe in our set ton and simplify education, if you got it.
And it's not that difficult, if you take a student, you're close, and just, you know, find a way to get them that extra push.
And we're doing the right work right now, so some of those things are designed to, again, not impact just one per adult, but have some really good things happen, so.
Ooh.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
For you.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
That, is there anything? Remember, we got graduation coming up, so thank you guys very much, have a great night. We got, thank you, Adam. We got graduation coming up, everybody can make that, I haven't learned any different, cool. And that's going to be Sunday, June 3rd, so come on over to the Horace Mann High School, and for Sean, you're going to come to the library, get a flower, and then everybody will organize how the homes get given out. Remember, there is no, what's that?
Get there early.
Yeah, what time?
Yeah, by twelve-thirty.
Okay.
And then the fourth, remember, we have no other meeting in May. Apologize for that budget stuff, we're going to have quite a bigger one in June, but I will get you all the other information and get that clarified. And then we have, our next meeting will be in June, unless we have some contracts for teachers, which we very well could have a few teachers that we're hiring, so just keep your ears open. But other than that, anything else that any of the administrative team want to offer? All right. Here we go.
All right. Next on the agenda, item J, new business, number one. Discuss and consider summer school educator contracts.
I'm going to do the annual declare potential conflict of interest, and ring myself from the discussion and vote.
All right.
Yep, this is abbreviated list, just because it's abbreviated program that Mike's running, so anything updates on summer school, going as smooth as what we think?
Going, going smooth. All those individuals are contacted, and they confirmed that they were interested in positions that are offered them for summer school. We only have mainly elementary offerings in a condensed period of time, instead of six weeks, it's three weeks, and it's after the Fourth of July. So basically, the entire month of July, except that Fourth of July week, getting ready for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and pre-K. So.
And there'll be some more that'll come out a few days later.
Yeah, Caravan, strength and conditioning for middle school and high school, band for high school and middle school. But mainly, it's very condensed this year due to a variety of factors.
All right. I'll look for board action then, to, recommendation is to approve the fat tax for the folks that are listed on the screen there. Report action to approve those contracts. Can I make a motion to approve?
A second.
All right. Any other further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Pollak?
Yes.
Goldbowski, yes. Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes. Right, motion carries. Adam, number two?
I guess it's still more upstairs.
She heard him. I remember two is discuss and consider educator contracts for the eighteen, nineteen school year, including possible.
Yes, and so we do have one new hire, so if you will add to this list, a recommendation that for.
Ann Bartelt.
Ann Bartelt and Carrie Jo, we'll talk about her in a second. But here's the list, all of them are the same, except for the highlighted, Mike Fedezin was already approved, and then Lauren Biolo, there's that change, Jim Nelson changed, Judy McHugh the change, her educator contract, but the money's coming from different areas. And then I will be sending out a letter with them, the raises after this year, so in that letter, there's also going to be information about a committee that's going to be formed by Maria, and they're going to start looking at how we do our pay. The reality of it is, is that in the past three years, educators have increased their wages anywhere from five thousand dollars to thirty-nine hundred dollars. So it's been really good, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars the past two years, this year a hundred and seventy-five dollars, put in the equation. You can see that the increases are anywhere from two percent to three point eight-three percent. And another thing that isn't figured in there, is that insurance costs have stayed the same, and they haven't gone up, so that hasn't had a negative impact on their take-home pay at all. So the average is two point seven percent. I'm very proud of all the educators. Do we have educators that need to continually improve? Absolutely. Do we have some educators that are not getting out of the park? You bet. But what I do know is, is we have very good people in every position, and I'm looking forward to, as we get to the evaluations, to see what we can do to help support people who are doing extremely well, and help those who need to get better to continue to improve. So it's that list, along with, and you could see the, the letter that I put, that I included in here, of that I'm going to be including with, the contracts, so, and that's in there too, so it also mentions the amount of benefits, how they've stayed the same. I don't think this year we have it, but next year, we're going to get to total employment costs, and so people can see how much the district pays for their total employment, to kind of give them more of an idea. And then the last one, I'll just turn it over to Carrie Jo for Ann Bartelt. I'd sent you some information, we know that we had some really high-quality candidates that have student taught here, and also have helped in many ways, and I'll just tell you a little, tell Carrie Jo to tell you a little bit about the pool, and how incredible it was.
Sure. So we have the position posted for a week, and we had over forty applicants within that time. And even within that pool, I mean, we had a lot of experienced teachers, we had some new teachers. It was really difficult just to narrow down the field to a reasonable amount of people to be able to interview. So altogether, we interviewed seven candidates, could have interviewed more, but we chose seven. And we, we had the good fortune of having multiple that would have been able to step in and do the job, which is really encouraging. So in the future, when we're looking at expansion, there's no doubt, there's plenty of talent that's out there and want to be part of Oriole Nation. The candidate that we chose to recommend to Erin, who's now recommending to, is Ann Bartelt. She is a twenty-year veteran teacher, currently teaching in the school district of Kohler. She's taught second grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, and she'll be teaching a first grade section at FLC pending your approval tonight. But she has her master's degree in educational technology, and has a lot of experience with differentiation and assessments, and just brings a lot of strengths to not only the first grade team, but also to our building and the areas that, that our staff will benefit from. So I'm looking forward to having her on board if her contract is approved.
And that, one of the exciting things is, I'm going to look at a very high, high-achieving school district, we're starting to have teachers wanting to come here, and when I ask, one of the questions I always ask, once we get all the financial things out of the way, is, why did you apply here? And every single one is because they hear about our innovation, they hear about our culture, and they want to be part of something where they feel they can really make a difference. And that's pretty much everyone that I've, I've heard of, there's other different things that they'll say, but that's pretty common thread. And what Carrie Jo had said, too, I mean, we had some really high-quality people that, one of the reasons we kept it so short, is that we knew we had high-quality people on staff, or that we had around here. So we don't know what our numbers are going to look like, pretty sure at this time next year, we're going to look at open enrollment, January, we might change that and open that up. We might be adding four to five teachers next year, elementary teachers that could have a huge impact. And I know that we'll have more retirees in the middle school next year, so it's good to know that that pool's there, and to get a high-quality veteran teacher to come in, that's, that was, that did a great job, is going to be cool. Just a really quick update, too, before taking, if you guys take a motion and talk about this, we currently, right now, this could change a little bit, but working with Kayla and Debbie, we're going to have to do some things that they're open enrollment, some students we're going to deny currently that are open enrollment because of costs and programs, so there's going to be a little bit of change there. But currently, right now, as we sit, we have four openings in our district, one in first grade and three in twelfth grade. Otherwise, we're pretty much closed, and we have people on a waiting list.
Are you talking about students?
Students, we're talking students. So, I mean, and that could change a little bit, because some that are going out, we might get in. I'm talking, meeting with Kayla and Debbie, again, we had a preliminary last week, this week, so Adam's really leading this charge of, how can we really help students to, to learn? And we've been working hard at that, but now that he can focus on that, that's the key. We have all the other stuff rocking and rolling, we get that variable right there and work together in that area, it'll be great. Another really positive thing is that on Thursday, I was coming back from Madison, and I got this text from Samantha Calder, there is a questionable post online about some violence at school possibly, a student brought it up. By the time I got, that was Sun Prairie, by the time I got to Wapon, two cops or police wanted Bonneville and North Bonneville, were going out, checking it out. I talked to those students this morning, and everything's good, big misunderstanding, but they understood it wasn't right. And that's from the leadership of teachers. And so now, we're starting to get even more focused on the learning component, and we have all this culture going, so I'm, I'm pretty excited tonight. From talking with Ann, she was really, really excited, talked her on Mother's Day, and I think she was more excited about the job than Mother's Day, so it was pretty exciting. Plus, her son's team was getting beat pretty bad in Forest, or AKA Dotyville. So that's how you know if you're from Holy Land, you don't call Forest, you call Dotyville. So, but I was very impressed with, and then today Debbie interviewed, and her team interviewed some for the high school special education, so hopefully those will be coming soon.
All right. I'll look to the board action then, for the approval of the educator contracts that have been presented, as well as a new one for Ann Bartelt.
Awesome.
I'll second. Any further questions, considered discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Goldbowski, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Upstate.
Pollak?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Right, motion carries, and they are approved. Number three, discuss and consider subcontractors for Friendship Learning, Horace Mann High School, and Bessie Allen Middle School, referendum projects.
As per our discussion in the closed session prior, what I'll put forward is, is all subcontractors that were listed on bid package number two, for the Bessie Allen and Horace Mann, along with WL Construction for the roofing at Friendship, along with Pinnell for the construction of the maintenance building, with the one caveat that the HVAC may change at the Bessie Allen Horace Mann project, depending on some refining of some others.
All right, so the recommendation is to approve the bid package, to approve the roofing contractor, and to approve the construction of the maintenance building through Pinnell. The board want to take those all at the same time, or individually?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll look to the board action, board, what's your pleasure?
Can I make a motion to approve those as stated?
All right. I'll second. All right, we'll go second then, to approve the three segments of contracts. Is there any further questions for discussion for the board members?
Can I also just add, the one caveat is that in that bid package, too, that I have written, so also the furniture's in there, that was a separate sheet, but it was also, I don't know, it was just put in there, it wasn't on there, but that would be considered part of the package, too, which was that furniture for Bessie Allen Horace Mann for the fifteen thousand allowance, it was about twelve.
Is that this one?
Yes. No, it was, yeah, it's a separate one, but it was part of that big package, it just, it wasn't on that sheet. I just want to make sure that we have that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, yep, yep.
Good to go?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That was a separate sheet.
Yeah, it's on right here.
Thank you. Yes.
Oh.
That's the spray.
All right. No other questions? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Will?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Goldbowski, yes.
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Next on the agenda, discuss and consider two thousand eighteen, nineteen student fees for food services and school fees.
All right, food service is going up ten cents, and that's just because federal law mandates us to do that. Why that is, is that the federal reimbursement rate is more than what our students pay. So over the past five, six, seven years, we've had to increase that a little bit, so that federal, so that the free and reduced lunch program doesn't subsidize regular. So that's why that is, and you can see those here. And then also our school fees, no change whatsoever. It's the same, we try to keep those costs down as much as possible, and there's been no recommendation from any administrator to change any of that. And it seems that the band, we, that was a big one, that band, solo ensemble fee thing, we ironed that out last year, and Anthony and Jerry both said that worked really well. And then if you guys, if the board does approve, I'll get these out to the secretaries and administrators, and they can get them up with their mailings and everything ready for next year.
Okay. So, look to the board to approve the recommended food service increase of ten cents, and approve the fees, same as last year.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Okay, we'll go second it. Any further questions for discussion?
Pollak.
Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pollak?
Yes.
Goldbowski, yes. Pollak?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes. Roll call vote, please.
Pollak?
Yes.
Goldaaski, yes.
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chizin?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Discuss and consider adoption of budget revisions for 2017-18.
Well, thank you. So this, I'll turn it over to Maria in about a minute. In the packet, you have a published, a little shorter caveat of the budget revisions, and then Maria handed you out a longer one, it's three pages. So she's probably going to be referencing the one that you handed out, that'd probably be easiest.
Actually, I'm going to reference the one that's going to get published.
Okay, so the one that's in the board?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can look at that one that I have up here. Really, bottom line is, we're doing really good, and what we learned, what, about five years ago, is it's very important to revise budgets in order for aiding and to make sure that we have a true picture of how the state looks at us for what they look at for aid and how our financials could take care of. So there wasn't, we were, there wasn't a lot of big surprises. Matter of fact, they're mostly done. Turn it over to Maria.
Yep. So you have the two documents. One is in your packet, and then one I handed out to you. The one that I handed out to you is like a little bit more detailed of the one that's in your packet. So as you, as you have a chance to digest the more detailed one, if you have any questions, just let me know. And that can be after this board meeting, anytime. Just email me or call me, and we can go through it. But the one I want to reference is the one that I'm going to actually, if you approve the revisions, this is the one that will get published in the paper per DPI, that has to be done. And it should look familiar. This is the same one, as a matter of fact, the column that says approved 1718, that's the budget that you all approved in October. And then the column that says revised 1718. I go through, couple weeks before this board meeting, I go through line by line and just compare budget to what actual is, and I try to forecast out, you know, heating and transportation and things like that, and I try to get a better picture of how the year is going to end. And there's two reasons for that. One, we want to know how we're going to sit at the end of the year, and then two, as Erin mentioned, DPI, once I, once this gets published, I will, I will submit a new budget to DPI, and they will use that budget to forecast our aid, and our aid estimate comes out in July. And as you know, in July, we're already well into the 1819 school year, so we rely on that aid estimate to predict our tax levy. So there's a couple reasons why we do this budget revision in May. So that being said, I just want to point out, there, like Erin said, there were no real big surprises. So I just want to focus on a few line items that did have some bigger changes, and actually, why don't I get to the really good news right now? As we put, as I put in your board packet, we're going to end the year with approximately close to $100,000 surplus, and a lot of that has to do with the sale of the Elmwood building. But it's still surplus, and that's awesome, and that's kudos to the staff and the administrators for keeping an eye on their budgets and spending wisely and investing our resources wisely. So my recommendation with that $94,000 surplus would be to keep $72,000 approximately in fund balance, and then allocate about $10,000 of that surplus to the capital improvement fund, which is that Fund 46 where we only have like $1,000 in there right now, and about $12,000 to our employee, our other, other post-employment benefit trust fund. And that pays our retirees' employment benefits, our retirement benefits.
You're smirking. Thanks.
One of the, one of the main reasons for utilizing those two funds is we get aided on that.
Yes, yes.
So by putting it into fund balance, that's going to increase our fund balance. We won't get aided on that portion, we're going to show a surplus. But as Maria had put in there, it really, our mill rate, because we already projected any more aid, it's not going to have a negative impact on the tax.
Right. It, maybe two cents. It might inflate the mill rate a little bit more because we would get less aid, so then, you know, that balancing, it would fall more at the local level, that responsibility. So that would be my recommendation, and that's what I built into this budget revision. So just a couple line items. Under debt service, and that is one, two, third dark box down, you're going to see a kind of a big adjustment there because we had two bond offerings. We had one in the fall, or we had one last summer, and then we just had one in the spring. So when we did the initial budget, I wasn't able to show what the new bond offering was going to, was going to be. So that's added in. It didn't change our mill rate at all. We can't make any changes mid-year. So that, that dollar amount is showing there. The other change, the bigger change, and it's related, the capital projects fund, you're going to see now that that, there's over $19 million in revenue that came in, and in October, there was nothing there yet. So that is the referendum money, and that's the box right below the debt service fund. So those two are related. Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward? Okay. Food service fund, the ending fund balance, and that's the last box on that first page. The ending balance is way down because we, the, was it the, yes, the kitchen here needed a walk-in cooler. So we were able to build up the fund balance. Last year, we had $22,000 that we ended with, and now they were able to buy a walk-in cooler.
And freezer.
And freezer.
Both, yeah.
Yes. So that brought the fund balance down, but we're, we have a really good year going, so we'll be able to build it.
That one, if you go into Bessie Allen into, there was a room between, like where all the, where the sink and the cleaning area is, there's that room that used to have like dry storage refrigerator, that whole room. Walk into a cooler, and then you walk in, and it's a freezer. It's pretty amazing.
Those are the three biggest changes besides the sale of Elmwood. And you can look line by line, in fact, you can look on that other document that I gave you, and you can see where those, exactly where those, where those updates occurred in salary. Everything was pretty much on target, and it was just those big, big items, and then allocating the surplus.
And just kind of like a point of reference, we really started, I mean, we're spending $6 million more now than we did four years ago. Our budget, if you look on that front page, our budget has increased to almost $16 million. It's almost $1.5 million from just three years ago. So it's pretty, it's pretty impressive. And then within that, how Maria and the team have been able to monitor this, you can see that our mill rate increase wasn't what we thought it would be. And next year, we're going to be in a very advantageous position if that does come through with our increased aid, where we can maintain that levy. And then in two years, remember, the budget allowed low-spending districts, anybody lower than $9,400, this year, we can raise it up to $9,400. We're like at $9,417. So we can't do it now, but that'll give us room the next year to go to $9,500 on our revenue cap without having an impact to the taxpayer that they see, and in the meantime, building up some revenue that we can put into our debt services fund balance to help even prepay some debt. So overall, I want to thank Maria and this process, it's been very helpful. Knowing that next year, we're going into possibly $340,000 deficit that we, that we're predicting upfront, but that will whittle that down to zero, and I fully anticipate us coming next year at this time to have hopefully good news again.
Yep. We'll watch it now. We've got about seven weeks of the fiscal year to go. You know, this is what we think will happen today, and it should be close, but we'll watch it now for the next seven weeks, and I can report back in June. And then our audit is in two and a half months, end of July already, so it feels like we just did it.
We'll start in three months.
Yeah.
As a senior, Dominic, I'm sorry about this summer, but next year.
Longer summer.
That's right. Well, you're done? You're done like May, what, 19th is graduation? Yeah.
A week from now, next year.
Now, also, just a caveat too, if, once this election all happens, they do do something with equal funding, 25, 25, 25, 25, or monthly, that will significantly then change what our fund balance needs to be, which will then open up some opportunities for us to maybe pay some debt off, to do some one-time calls for professional development, do different things. So there is, we're looking in the next year or two, opportunities to even make ourselves not only stronger financially, but also stronger in the ability to leverage and best support and help kids learn.
Any questions?
You did a good job, Maria.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll look to the board for their action on the approval of their revised budget as presented. Sean's still adding up the numbers. Sorry, no, I'm good, I'm good.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Pollak?
Yes.
Chizin?
Yes.
Goldaaski, yes.
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
And last, on the new business agenda, is item number six, discuss and consider the OPEB trust agreement and single advisory contract update.
All right, this, I'll turn it, I don't even know if I need to turn it, it's very, it's just wording. There's things that happened with our trust that we have that, it's just some wording that has to be board approved.
That's basically it. We're in a consortium for our trust, for the retirement trust, and every three years, they look at the trust agreement, and they just saw some, some not-quite-clear language. So that's, that's all that is.
Just the language update, the contract, if there were any changes.
Yep, and that's the same. Yeah, trustees are the same, everything, the structure is the same, it was just some wording. And there are some documents in there for you and Vicki to sign, so, yeah.
We're signing. Wonderful. All right. What's the board's pleasure on approval of the trust agreement?
Make a motion.
I'll second. If we will second, any further questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Will?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Chizin?
Yes.
Goldaaski, yes.
Yes.
And the motion carries. That concludes the new business portion. The next on the agenda is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So, you're moved and seconded, and it requires no discussion, and it's not debatable, and so therefore, roll call vote.